All right, I have six o'clock. Full uh drive from the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, can you do roll call please?
McIntyre?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
DeCook?
Here. Uh any agenda deletions or changes? I have one we're going to scrap, number eleven, discussion of fund allocation, resales equals with possible action. Are there any other changes or deletions? Seem none. Uh first on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. Claims of over three million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and nineteen cents, forty dollars in Frenchish. B, minutes to approve regular meeting, May four, two thousand twenty-one, work session meeting, May eleven, two thousand twenty-one, special meeting, May eleven, two thousand twenty-one. C, wage change, Tyler Schoffer, conservation tech, conservation effective, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. Wage change, Abigail McVay, motor vehicle clerk treasurer, effective, May nine, two thousand twenty-one. E, wage change, Alicia Peterson, motor vehicle clerk treasurer, effective, May eighteen, two thousand twenty-one. F, removed from payroll, Alan Brownell, secondary roads, effective, May fourteen, two thousand twenty-one. G, wage change, Chad, Chad Botteroff, motor raider operator engineer, effective, May twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one. H, wage change, Cameron Glover, road maintenance tech engineer, effective, June one, two thousand twenty-one. I, wage change, Jacob Gardner, road maintenance tech engineer, effective, May nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. J, wage change, Bradley Ergenberger, paving foreman engineer, effective, May nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. K, new hire, Patrick Sinclair, part-time dispatcher sheriff, effective, May nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. L, new hire, Jamie Lee, part-time dispatcher sheriff, effective, May nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. M, new hire, Margaret Weatherman, part-time dispatcher sheriff, effective, May nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. N, new hire, Haley Morowski, temporary legal assistant county attorney, effective, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. O, removed from payroll, Emily Bell, legal assistant county attorney, effective, May twelve, two thousand twenty-one. P, new hire, Deborah Sagbart, part-time veterans office, veteran services officer VA, effective, uh April twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Q, wage change, Ted Hall, full-time veterans service officers VA, effective, May fifteen, two thousand twenty-one. R, alcohol license renewal, Red Acre Barn, Pearl, Iowa. And X, set public hearing date for June one, two thousand twenty-one, at nine forty AM for the second hearing regarding the reason of the applicant, applications submitted by Right Real Property Holding LLC. Do you have a motion to give up?
We make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
McIntyre?
I'm.
Peter?
I.
DeCook?
I, motion carries. Number two on our agenda tonight is the Historic Preservation Commission to discuss the planning for a preservation project in the contract with Spark Consulting.
Yes, that's me.
Yes, sir, how are you?
I'm doing good, thank you. I have the pleasure to know some of you via Facebook, um you're the new members. So I'm actually representing the Historic Preservation Commission and and two of the members, uh Julie Russell and Skip Phillips, as well. Um I'm known to board everybody with the history of our organization and how we're doing it. But um in August of last year, the state of Iowa awarded us the certification as a certified local government, which um is a great honor for us, especially as a county, to have the ability to access to money from the state as being a certified local um county, which it helps us also for our initiatives for preservation of many things within the any incorporated part of the county. Um in that process, um by the suggestion of Paul Moore, which is representative for the state, uh said that we should apply for a grant for a preservation planning program, which will allow us to learn the processes within the state rules or regulations, how to apply for, you know, preservation of, let's say, this grand Indianola or a barn in some little town or church or sanitary, which multiple different things. So we applied for the grant and we got the grant awarded at the end last year. Um after that, we submitted seven proposals to uh different um consultants that were suggested by the state of Iowa, and we received three proposals back from that. And out of that, in our last meeting, uh we presented all the proposals to the board and we voted to go with Spark Consulting, which is the group that um it was chosen for the actual project. Um the project itself, um it get sent a contract, which is the contract was evaluated by the state of Iowa. We just inputted our information, our name and stuff. And now the last step of the process is for the board to announce the contract and by Mr. DeCook to sign and proceed with that. Um this is a combination of grant money from the state, in-kind money from us and volunteers, around ninety hours um of volunteer and work for the whole process. And you will take from, let's see here, just look in the notes to give you, starting around August of this year, and it will be submitted to completion on April of twenty twenty-second. So that would be next year. So officially, we're going to start working on this full-time in August uh with the consulting. And that is what I wanted to present to you, and especially because I haven't had the opportunity to choose myself personally. It's for since this was not necessary started, we assumed. Um so we took the opportunity, now we're vaccinated, to come in person. With our masks and being able to talk to everyone and show you how excited we are with the support from the board supervisors from the get-go. Because I'm not sure if you're aware, uh as a heater, but the uh commissioner was in life support for a while and we got resurrected and um we got people now that really interested in to pursue the well-being for the county and just preserve our heritage. And um so I'm probably the only one, I'm not from Iowa, or neither from Warren County, but I own a farm here and I'm in love with the county and what we have. And I think it's an incredibly important sport, everyone to put the effort into save many structures there in chance to, you know, being destroyed for neglect, uh lack of money for that matter. So that was my spiel. I have a letter for the contract um with this company and I guess I can give it to Dawn and she can take care of that for us. I'm not sure if any of you have any questions for me.
I'm very excited that you stepped up and helped to preserve the preservation of the historical society as part of Warren County. Not the society, but this op um.
Yes, preservation commission.
Yeah, commission, thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome. We're excited too, because the society has been in life here in the county for a long time. They manage the museum and we create a partnership with them as well. That way we're all talking one voice instead of being all these little organizations trying to pull strength. So I think in the power, the other thing is good for the state, having us as a center where in a little, you know, community that they don't have representation, they would like to do a project, the state would send us to talk to us. So that's the way it's going to happen. The good thing about this, once we get this project gone, there is an ordinance, it can be passed after the fact when we feel more, you know, entitled to the knowledge of how to proceed, that we can be of service to you as a commission. You can evaluate future projects from individuals in the incorporated area. And that way we can give a, you know, uh Skip is an architect, which is good. He's the only one who has the knowledge of, otherwise, like everybody else is just love to the old things. But um it's um, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good group and we are really interested in the preservation of it. So so far, the only two programs that were done in the past, it was supporting the Palmyra Church um restoration, which is a one of the um, it's um, I kind of remember now. It's um, it's, it's part of the registry, a national registry. Uh we have uh twelve properties within the, the, the county that they are registering with. Um we had thirteen until the demolition of it, but we lost that one. We have to wait fifty years to get this one registered. But uh so that's what I have, um any other questions, suggestions?
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you both.
I think you should do a resolution, um. Authorizing the chairperson to sign the contract.
For the project. For the project. Make a motion.
One second. Is there any discussion, right? Uh roll call please.
McIntyre?
I'm.
Peter?
I.
DeCook?
I.
Motion carries. Right, number three, Mental Health Month proclamation, discussion of possible action.
Yes, hello, I am for you tonight, um just to bring the Mental Health Month proclamation. Um with CICS, we are bringing this proclamation to all of our member counties, as well as it'll be on the governing board this month as well. I'm just trying to bring awareness um about mental health illnesses and some of the statistics that are in this proclamation. Um we, Mental Health America is kind of the ones who promote May to be Mental Health Month. And so um they are the ones that give us kind of a toolkit and part of the toolkit is the proclamation, so that is what I have for you today. Do you want me to read it? I've gotten pretty good at it, I've been doing it in a few counties.
Why ask that?
I thought you would rather me read it than I'd be. I'll skip the last paragraph and let you pull up there or pick up there if that works out there.
That's good.
Good, perfect. Uh whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas Mental Health America reports that nine point seven percent of youth have severe major depression, this rate was highest among youth who identified as more than one race at twelve point four percent. Even before COVID-18, the prevalence of mental health illnesses, mental health illness among adults was increasing, an increase of one point five million people over last year's data. In addition, Mental Health America states from January twenty twenty to September twenty twenty, there was reported ninety-three percent increase in anxiety screenings and sixty-two percent increase in depression screenings. And whereas education is an effective way to reduce the stigma of mental illnesses, and whereas mental health illnesses are real and prevalent in our county regardless of socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas we encourage our citizens to get help from mental health illnesses and to understand it is as important to treat as any other illness such as diabetes or heart disease. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health illnesses and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas through increased awareness, we can achieve our goal to abandon negative stigmatism and reinforce our acceptance of individuals seeking treatment. Then.
Therefore, I err and cup chair Warren Board of Supervisors, view hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-one as Mental Health Month in Warren County, Iowa. As the chair, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools of Warren County, Iowa, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health at all stages.
Any other questions for me? It's a mouthful. We've really added a lot of mental health services in Warren County. And so I really do feel like what it talks about at the end, you know, the need for appropriate and accessible services for all individuals at all stages. The legislation has really charged the regions with crisis services and we have really developed those in the last three years. So um we have outpatient for people who are kind of having more of the routine ongoing support. We also have those crisis services for people who are in that crisis level, so kind of goes along with what the proclamation states. Yep, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt our um proclamation as read.
One second. Roll call please.
McIntyre?
I.
Peter?
I.
DeCook?
I.
There isn't a. All right, number four on the agenda, perfect timing at six fifteen. Public meeting to consider abandonment of streets and alley in Churchill.
This actually should be a public hearing about conveyance of already vacated streets, Main Street and um Streets line, West Street line west of Flats Four and Five and and um North Street. In Churchill, this is all in Churchill, which if you drive west on Highway ninety-two and you go north on Thirty, you're going to eventually see Churchill or Churchill on your um left as you're heading north. The Henrietta Hus Trust, an attorney from that trust contacted the county attorney's office and asked whether um the county would be interested in conveying these vacated streets to the trust. The trust owns property around those streets and we've looked at whether this would interfere with anybody else's access to their property within Churchill and what they're asking for does not. Um I would ask that the board go into a public hearing to consider this matter.
I'll make a motion to go into a public hearing.
One second. Roll call please.
McIntyre?
I.
Peter?
I.
DeCook?
I.
Or a public hearing.
So I've given you the information about the uh the request from Henrietta Hus Trust regarding conveyance of those abandoned or vacated streets in Churchill. I've not had any contact, no, this has been published, I've not had any contact from anybody, either in support or opposition.
Did, did the county reach out specifically to the, is there, it looks like there's one neighbor and it looks like part of the vacated road, there's a garage or a structure or a dwelling or something on it, and that's not part of this conveyance?
That is not, that would not be part of this conveyance, that would stay just as it is.
I understand, but has that, has that neighbor been contacted by the county?
Not directly, no.
Okay.
Because they had no interest in that particular piece. And the homeowner that has their residence right next to that piece north, of that north piece of Main Street, um they built actually into that.
Kind of built on it.
Vacated piece, so we certainly would entertain their request.
Yes, if that, if that homeowner would come before this board and ask for us to grant them a conveyance of that road where their dwellings already located it, I'm guessing they'd probably have some luck with that too.
All they need to do is make a request and I serve them before the board.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Dawn or um it is open to the public? If there's uh comments online or here in the room, uh we will certainly hear them out. Okay. We'll, we'll leave for public hearing.
I'll make a motion to leave public hearing.
Second.
Roll call please.
McIntyre?
I.
Peter?
I.
DeCook?
I.
Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to transfer listed property to the Henrietta Hus Street Viable Trust.
Second.
Ooh, sorry.
Hundred dollars and we have a second question?
Yes, do we have to have any other meeting?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to have any other hearings or reading?
No, this is it. I'm waiting, he's on second and thirty, you're in.
All right, second.
Okay, uh motion in a hearing or a motion in a second, uh roll call please.
McIntyre?
I'm.
Peter?
I.
DeCook?
I.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Number five on our agenda tonight is dispatch feasibility study, Polk County, discussion of possible action.
Okay. Um this is, goes back to um our work session and a meeting that was held between um Polk County and Madison County and Dallas County and Warren County to discuss a potential alignment um of counties, a regional, to develop a reg- uh regional dispatch uh center in Polk County that Warren County could potentially become a part of. And in that meeting, um and by the way, Joe Carrico, our sheriff, had um uh presented this concept to um the nine-one-one board last night. And um the study will basically give us a lot more information about how the two entities, Warren County, Polk County, would interact, how our systems would integrate, uh what the cost is, what the service levels um are in Polk County, what the service levels are in Warren County. Um and for example, the um uh well, I won't go into that right now. Um so anyway, this, this was presented, it's a, it's an opportunity. This, this proposal offers um an opportunity to o- offer our dispatchers um more training. They would become Polk County employees. Uh it would give them pretty much every um uh complaint that they, that I'm aware of for dispatch, it would be, th- those things would be covered. They'd, they'd ask for more training, they'd ask for less uh time, for more pay, uh for more direction, for management. All of those things would be provided um to the dispatchers. And, and this would allow um our dispatchers to um improve their skill set in the area of dispatch. So um they would get the training to potentially um help people with uh the verbal cues of du- of uh of uh providing CPR. So someone would call in to dispatch today in Warren County and uh you know, I'm having these symptoms, I have, need some emergency help, we, we send out the help. In Polk County, they have the ability to discuss the symptoms and talk medically about what's going on and um and medically give some direction to hopefully, you know, to keep them uh healthy until the emergency service arrives. That's just one idea of how the level of service would increase. And the study will force us to answer questions like how many calls a month do our dispatch get? Um what uh what is our response time now from uh from Indianola to Iowa to get, you know, medical services out there? It'll do a very detailed analysis of what we're doing now and what is the cost to do it better. And the estimated cost um to regionalize, there's some economy of scale advantages to regionalization. And um by all accounts, um and basically the range of cost of services, we um could save hundreds of thousands of dollars by joining a regional, by be developing or joining a region in dispatch. Um so that's what's on the table. We would like the opportunity to do a study. The cost is twenty-five thousand dollars, we will pay half of that fee. And um that's what's on the table tonight, just to get a vote. I can tell you that, and Crystal, you know, can just please, you know, add anything you want to. The nine-one-one board that is uh sixteen, sixteen members had basically voted this down. There, the, the nine-one-one commission is not in favor of this. And they.
I think they would like a study, but um a study that I think is derived from us and to look at all options, not just going to Polk County.
I do not serve on that board, but what, I uh, was that a unanimous decision by that board? They were all not in favor of the feasibility study?
There, there was one, yes.
Okay. So then really relative to the question of whether or not we want to spend twelve thousand five hundred dollars for our study where we, it doesn't appear as though we have the support, that even if the study comes back favorable saying that this is a good option, that we're not going to have the board to do it.
Um the nine-one-one director was given um the go-ahead to contact different vendors to look into possible other studies um that could be tailored more for Warren County and the other options that are available. I think the drawback was um Polk County's on a different system than ours. Uh we have Monroe, they have the Harris system, um and that's also a different platform. We have the Disex and they have the Sarah. So um they weren't really interested in that aspect of it when in ten minutes with a thumb drive, we can go to Westcom and they can fully dispatch today. Same with Dallas and others who have our system.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to um approve the feasibility study in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. It doesn't look like supervisor McIntyre is going to second. Um I'm going to let it fail for lack of a second as well at this time, just because it, it doesn't look like, in my mind, putting forth the resources on something that seems like it's already going to be a dead end um makes a lot of sense at this moment in time. So absent some changes from some of the other decision makers on that, um it just doesn't, it just looks like we're going to be tossing good money out there.
I think it's a, I think it's a good example of um how our government works because what, what lays in front of Warren County and our taxpayers is an opportunity to save five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars and increase our level of service. That lays in front of this board and where in, in the history of Warren County have we had an opportunity to take five hundred to a million dollars out of our general fund on an annual basis? And the people that are making the decisions on this are not, most are not accountable to the public. So we got some, their board, think about this, their board, I mean, there are people that are elected on that board, but the majority are not. They're not elected officials, they don't represent anybody and they do not have accountability to anybody. So with the, the money is spent here and just think about that for a moment.
Okay, well, I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to it forever and forever, um but I would like to talk to a few of the people that were in the meeting last night. I just, I haven't had.
I appreciate that.
I haven't had an opportunity to do so yet, the meeting was last night, I had.
Just as long as you're willing, keep talking about it, Aaron. Well, and Crystal. That's all that matters.
I will.
And, and we will be having a joint meeting on Tuesday.
We have something because of the twenty-fifth, don't we?
Yes, which is the law, uh nine-one-one and EMA, and this is the topic of discussion.
For the public's benefit, at least from my perspective, I don't think that it's dead forever. It just needs some more consideration and tell, um and unless I have a better sense that if the study comes back very favorable and those numbers are accurate, um we're not doing the study.
I understand.
I'm just saying, so that's, we're not asking to change it and so. I'm sorry, you're okay. Um, well, let me talk to them. I, last night I had a, a church leadership. I, last night I had a church leadership meeting and a school board meeting, so I didn't, I didn't get a chance to follow up with those that were in the nine-one-one meeting, but I will. And we have a pretty prime opportunity to do so and to continue that discussion on the twenty-fifth. So for now, it does not appear to be moving forward. I will concede though that whether or not that ultimate plan happens, I'm certainly not a gambler in life, but you know, betting, if you will, twelve and a half for an opportunity of five or seven hundred and fifty, that seems like a pretty good odds to head off. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to really giving it some thought. I just need a little more time with it so we can discuss it further on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number six on the agenda tonight is the streetscape discussion of possible action. And I think this is maybe just an update from Supervisor here.
Yeah, it's just a very quick update. There was a pre-con meeting with Warren County and our construction manager with Absolute Concrete Company. I just wanted to publicly and bring the board to note that that meeting went extremely well. I had a lot of concerns around streetscape and doing it at the same time simultaneously with our project. After attending that meeting, they were very conscientious of our project, very in tune with what we were doing. There's been some good coordination between all the entities, a lot of discussion, and I've got a pretty high comfort level that that's all going to work out. I think Chairman DeCook had called this six months ago, that it was going to be fine, and, and I think it looks like at this point that it, it is going to be fine. So that's all I got on that one.
Thank you Supervisor. Number seven, approve offer to purchase permanent easements for project number L dash BRB zero eight five seven dash seven three nine one. Mr. Kiril.
So this is for a bridge replacement project on Cannon Street. We're proposing to replace it with a precast box cover. It's for different property owners, it's simply to purchase permanent easement for the purpose of right-of-way. So we have room to do the work and room to maintain the structure for its life. Prices range from, out of the four property owners, it's two hundred and fifty dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars per property, which is very reasonable, which I think is about a five thousand dollar per acre cost, and it's mostly brush ground, not, not very usable. Any further questions on that?
Number one. Nope, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. And number eight, approve road reclassification of Polk Street east of R fifty-seven highway from a level B to a level A.
This one was previously discussed at one of the work sessions, but a property owner desired to convert four hundred feet of level B road to level A off a pavement off R fifty-seven. Since then, the property owner has paid, paid all the material costs to do so on that four hundred feet totaling almost eighty-seven hundred dollars. So our office recommends converting that four hundred feet of level B road to level A road, considering he paid the bulk of the project cost.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, motion carries. And number nine, approve road reclassification of Polk Street West over S twenty-three from a level B to a level A.
This one is to extend Polk Street West four hundred feet off the existing level A. We don't need any additional right-of-way, and there's no additional grading work or ditching or things of that nature required. The gentleman on this road has been paying into private rock for fifteen years and has neighbors that also use the private rock portion of the road. So given the fact that he's been privately paying for rock on that road for that many years, and it doesn't take the additional right-of-way grading work, we've, we recommend upgrading that four hundred foot stretch to level A road, and then he's no longer also paying for rock for his neighbor as well. We don't feel like that's a fair situation to be in.
So is it right, David, that to the west part of this four hundred feet, as well as to the east part of the four hundred feet on Polk Street, it's level A, and there's just this one little stretch of B between where this gentleman lives?
To the west of his house is level B, and to the east of him is level A to S twenty-three.
I got it.
So I believe it's thirteen hundred twenty feet of level A up to that four hundred feet.
I'll make a motion to approve the reclassification of Polk Street West of S twenty-three for the four hundred feet from level B to level A.
Question.
We have a motion and a second vice, Supervisor McIntyre? Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number ten on the agenda tonight is a vote to add two additional board members to five in total in the next general election. And I see we have some folks in the audience that might be interested in speaking on that, but I'll, I'll, I'll start it off. As discussed in a prior work session, certainly during campaigning years ago, some folks in the county were desirous of going from a three-member board of supervisors to a five-member board of supervisors. There are really two ways in which that can happen, and ultimately, either one of those scenarios involves a vote by the citizens of Warren County to make that happen. So it's, it's, really you can get there either way. One of the options, and the quicker of the two options, is if the current board is desirous to put that on a ballot in a general election, then a simple majority of the citizens can make that happen. And it would be my position that I'm, I'm fine with that. Ultimately, the voters of Warren County can make their decision known. If they would like to see the board expand from three to five, then so be it. And if they would like to retain a three-person board of supervisors for the future, so be it. This really just puts it before them. Some of the things, and the reasoning and rationale behind that thought in mind is that I will tell the public that it's, there is a real benefit to being a five-member board, and in large part that comes down to, in my mind, the open meetings, rules and regulations that we must abide by. So while I can certainly have a conversation with Aaron and Crystal, or we can chit-chat about family matters, or the weather, or how great the Iowa Hawkeye football team's going to be this fall, when it comes down to, to policy, when it comes down to something that we're going to vote on, then I am not allowed to have those conversations with my colleagues and say, where are you at on this? And, because we would have a quorum, we would have two out of three, we would have a majority of the board there, and the public would be absolutely entitled to know and have access to it. So I think that for a county that is now, after the census is out, will be north of fifty thousand people, a county that is top ten in population and are increasing revenues, we just have a lot of moving parts. Because of that, there are times where it would be very helpful and handy for this board and future boards, in my estimation, to be able to converse with each other, to be able to sit down and have frank conversations. And, and we can do that, and sometimes the public sees that because that's the only option that we have. And we sort of have a, I won't call it a dogfight, but sometimes we really hash it out there, and some of those conversations probably would be better off to be had in a more private setting. And so I think that it would make sense to go to five. I would be supportive of that. Some of the concerns that I've heard along the way of leaving it at three really comes down to the population demographics of our county. I, I don't think it's a big surprise that Norwalk, Coming, Carlisle, to a large extent are growing rapidly. Indianola's also growing, and you know, the world is, is probably shrinking, although there's a lot of world development too, for sure. So I think that how that happens makes a, a, a big difference. It would be my preference to have zones where you'd have to live within one of the five zones. If there's fifty thousand people in the county and you have five, then you have to break up each district into an approximate ten thousand people. And how that gets carved up, I think, matters. But ultimately, from my take, I think that, that the citizens might actually get a little bit better representation. And the reason I think that is because, and it's not a knock on Supervisor Peter, he's new, and I think he's doing a good job. But Indianola is an example, is an almost, almost exclusively municipality voter demographic. I mean, ninety-five percent of, of that district live inside the city limits of Indianola. And, and probably ninety-five percent of those folks also live on pavement. And, and that's not bad, it just means that that supervisor maybe has a different constituency than what Supervisor McIntyre has, where I'm guessing ninety-five percent of your voters do not live on pavement. But some of them do, some of them certainly do. But it, it just needs to be somewhat equitable. And if you go to five, then what happens in my mind is you're probably breaking up the two largest population centers of Norwalk and Indianola. And if you do that, Indianola has fifteen thousand as an example, well, what you're going to have probably is part city, part rural, part city, part rural, and, and you know, where that person comes from, I don't know. I don't, I'm not drawing the map, but my point is, every district's going to have a better mix, in my mind, of folks living inside cities and folks living in rural, unincorporated county. So I think that, that actually is probably an argument in favor of it, but. Those are my thoughts, I am supportive of it, but I, I welcome to hear the thoughts of my colleagues and anyone else in the public who would like to speak on it. I'm, I'm truly eager to hear your thoughts on it. We can take a vote on it, and if we've got two or three of us on board with that, then, then really it'll be up to the people. I'm not going to spearhead that charge to voters, but I'm happy to answer questions or give my thoughts on it, so up to you. Sure, if you just say your name and address it, we're good.
Tom Phillips, Ninety-two Forty Lakewood Circle, Norwalk. I'm the mayor of Norwalk. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. Board members, thank you. I have with me here tonight Drew Merrifield, mayor of Carlisle, and Pam Pepper, mayor of Indianola, that are in support of this. As we started talking about this, we really looked at some of the decision-making and, and that was being made by the supervisors. And this seemed to have somewhat of a lack of information as they were making decisions. I did some research on the size of boards, and that, that verified that. What that research shows is that boards that are three or, three or less, that there is not enough communication between the members of that board to be able to share information, or, or their ability to garner additional information, get ideas to garner information, they're, they're a little hamstrung by that. So they have a tendency to make decisions without all of the information available. Boards that are more than seven, they have too much information, they can't make up their minds, and they don't make decisions very well. You know, it's because everybody has their own opinion. So, and what the research came down to is, ideal board sizes are between four and seven. And I, I'd like to see the supervisors go to five. One of the reasons would be so that you can't have tie votes. And, and that's primarily the reason. I think five's a good number. I think your workload could be distributed through five people very well. You would also then be able to have more than one supervisor on committees, such as the Justice Center or the E nine-one-one committees. Those big things could have two board members on them then, and, and not break any open meetings laws. So those are some of the reasons why we do. Aaron had a lot of good points there that I will, I will try to go over as well. I would say that this is a good time to do this. You are in the process, or should have started the process, of redistricting at this point in time, because this is a year that ends in one. The census is done. And there's a possibility that because of the delay in getting census counts, true census counts, that it could be done in conjunction and possibly done, redistricted for five districts prior to December fifteenth for the 2022 election. Otherwise, there, there's a possibility, or a good possibility, that this won't take effect until the 2024 election. So, but those are, those are just a couple of thoughts. Like, you know, if Drew and Pam would like to come up, that would be great as well. But thank you for letting me address you tonight.
Thanks for being here.
Hello, Pam Pepper, three oh eight North Sixteenth Street, Indianola, Iowa. I am the mayor of Indianola. Thanks for having us. I'm here to agree with my fellow mayors. We are in support of you increasing to five supervisors. I think for all the reasons that were stated above, it just makes sense, and the easiest way to do it is through this process. So I strongly encourage you to vote for this. Thanks.
Kathy Stanfield, four oh seven West Ashland, Indianola. And at the time of the round robin supervisors' meeting fiasco a number of years ago, Marilyn Haldeman and I were working toward a petition to get a five-member board. And at that time, I had in my mind, I would like to have seen a three, three districts and two at large. And then I found out that that was not a option. And I just kind of, it just kind of cooled off at that time, but I still think it's a very good idea. And I think the discussion tonight about the communications, the study, is an example of why you need more headset, you know. I, I would like very much to see a five-member board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just for the public's benefit, you would, you would know that we would be working together and breaking those open meeting laws if everything passed three zero, and clearly we sometimes bring things up to the agenda and it fails. And what you never see, or almost never see, at the state legislature or in DC is the majority bring up a bill and have it die. It doesn't die because they know they have votes. We don't know that we have the votes, and so sometimes we bring things up and hash them out, and it would be nicer not to do that. So I agree with you. It is a good example.
Drew Merrifield, Ninety-ten Market Street, Carlisle, Iowa, mayor of Carlisle. Crystal, Aaron, both of you know that I've been advocating for this for years, and it seems like now is a, a, just an opportune time to do it. I could certainly stand up here and go on for a long time as far as the benefits, but I'm not going to do that. What Pam said and what Tom have said and what Chairman DeCook said all fit right into this. It really comes down to representation, and five members would certainly have a better representation- It really comes down to representation and five members would certainly have a better representation number-wise. Let's say we're at fifty thousand, five would be ten thousand apiece compared to roughly, what? Seventeen, seventeen now? So I definitely think it would be in the benefit of, of our citizens of the county. So I'm gonna leave it at that. I, you've heard enough. Thank you.
Supervisor Peter, do you have any thoughts on?
Um, I, yeah, I have a few thoughts. Um, you know, I've been, I've been in favor, the concept of five board members makes sense from a, from a communication standpoint, a continuity standpoint and the flow of information and, um, definitely, you know, in favor of the concept. The, uh, the one, this, the one thing I would like to have on the ballot is the financial impact to the county, whatever, whatever that is. When we had two supervisors, um, not quite sure what the number is. And I don't know if we can vote with just, I've, you know, I voted with what is the dollar amount? What's the additional cost? Um, just so the public is aware of that. Uh, I can, uh, I've been doing some, a little bit of research on this and when I think about in terms of what is gonna make our county better? Like, how are we gonna make decisions better? Um, what's gonna make us more efficient? Uh, the thought that keeps coming up in my mind is to have a manager form of government where we have a person, uh, in our county that attends all our meetings. They attend the nine-one-one meetings. They attend the streets gate meetings. They attend the Warren County US Center meetings. They, they have a full and comprehensive understanding of all the moving parts in our county. And my concern is, is that having two more part-time board members is nice 'cause Aaron and I could visit. I'm not, I just can't connect exactly how that makes us more functional or more, uh, operational because, you know, I, I believe that, um, the way we're structuring out, it's a, it, it could easily be a full-time job for three board members. So would I like to have five? I would love to have five. I would love to have, um, us divided up. And since I got here, uh, we have done some things that have, we've tried to increase the flow of communication. So our board has put in work sessions every two weeks. So that's an opportunity for us to sit on top and to get our issues out. And sometimes, as Aaron says, that, that's not pretty sometimes. Sometimes that can get pretty, pretty intense and, um, to me, that's healthy for the public to see that. I mean, we're all passionate about what we're doing. We all have our experiences and our beliefs and our ideas on how to move the county forward. Maybe that's good to get your, your ideas out. Um, I can tell you that Lynn County, ten years ago, went from three to five and two years ago went back to three. And so when you start thinking about, um, you know, are there some advantages to a five-member board? I think there are, but are there any disadvantages to a five-member board? As far as everybody getting together at the same time? As far as how quickly decisions can be made? As far as how nimble you can navigate the different issues? Um, I don't know. I would say right now, um, you know, if, if we had to vote tonight, I would, I would be in favor of five board members just from the standpoint of dividing the workload, of being able to communicate. But I'm not so sure in my mind that that gets us where we want to go as a county without a manager, without an administrator that, you know, understands the county laws, that can navigate through, that can attend all the meetings, that can, uh, make sure that what we're doing is enforced, that our resolutions that we place forward are actually being invited to. And we don't do any of that cross-checking or, or, uh, day-to-day leadership. We're, we're just not, we just don't, don't have the time to really dive into, um, you know, what counties are doing next. Strategic planning is a very good example. We don't do that here in our county and we're getting started on that, thanks to Crystal. Um, but how many years are we gonna go by without, without doing some strategic planning? And how is, how does a stu, how does a supervisor come in every day and make sure some of those things happen? We all have wish lists. We all have items that we want to get done, but the co, the being here every single day, all day long, is not anything that, uh, we're rea, really doing as supervisors. Just to be, uh, we're, we, we, we come in, we get our stuff done. We have other things in our lives that we're doing. So I think the question is, you know, if, you know, is five gonna get done what we need to get done? Do we need, as we're doing this, the question I have is can we, will a board be interested in a alternate form of government where we have, have a manager? Because that's just not something we can do. We have to have the people approve an alternate form is, um, my understanding. And do we want to do this all at the same time? If, if the question is can we have a manager and five supervisors? That, that, that is a yes for me. I mean, I, I think we figure out what the financial impact is and we get it out there and we figure out a way to do that. And I think that's really the combination of things that can propel us to the next level. Um, and the question of should the supervisors be full-time? Because in some counties they are full-time. And, um, you know, we're, I don't think any of us, maybe Crystal, she pretty much does work. I mean, you, you're pretty close to full-time, like, based on what I'm seeing. I'm not, I didn't, I, you know, I understood this to be a part-time position. Um, and I have really no interest in working full-time. I have no interest in it. Um, but I have a great interest in the county and I have a great interest in trying to have an impact here. So, you know, as long as we're making the changes or we're, we're trying to figure out what to do, let's really make the changes if, if that makes sense for us. Let's think outside the box a little bit. But I would like to, I mean, I'd like to hold off on and have some of these discussions. We've got until, I don't know when November to put this on the ballot, correct? Like, we've got plenty of time?
Is it June, Tracy?
Our deadline would be in March. Not this year, next year.
No, I mean to put it on the general election for this year.
Well, there is no general this year. It's only city, school.
Oh, and, and then if-
It would be next year, twenty-two.
But even if we were to put it, if we were to vote tonight in a, um, approve this, could the, that be on the November election this year?
It would have to be next year with the general.
I'm, I'm misunderstanding that, how that works then. I'm sorry.
It would go, like, we would, we would vote tonight if we voted the, um, go to five, then it would go on the ballot in two thousand twenty-two in November.
Correct.
And then the people would decide at that point if they want to approve this. And if they, if they vote to approve it, then was it two thousand twenty? Then, then the two thousand twenty-four?
Who votes would be?
It would go, then there'd be five people on the ballot with this ring. So this is-
Okay.
This is, this is out, this is out there a ways. And I just, you know, so it may not, it may, it may not affect any of us, but I don't, and the question I have is will five part-time workers in leadership be better than three with one full-time manager with the same spend? That's a comparison that, yeah, I can't get really across my mind. But I would, you know, five supervisors with a manager? I think it's a slam dunk. It's just what are the financial impacts of that? I just think we need more, um, I think leadership and management are a gap. It's hard for a part-time supervisor to really engage into this as a full-time job when you anticipated it to be a part-time job. But there are so many opportunities in the county to, to do good things. There's so many opportunities here and, uh, you know? So that's, that, those are my thoughts. Um, and I'm all for changing how, how we do, how we structure. I'm all for five board members, but I want to make sure we're maximizing the structuring in a way that's the most powerful. What are your, what are you, do you have thoughts, Crystal?
Yes, I do. Um, I, I appreciate that research that you brought, Drew Phillips, because, um, I, I do take this very seriously and I attend almost as many meetings as I can. Um, I might even go overboard to try to understand something so that I can vote. Um, I do feel very responsible for every vote that I make. And, um, I believe that that's why I was elected, is to understand things as well as I can. Um, uh, I think that the representation, um, is really important. And, um, I do like the way, if we go to five, that it seems like it needs geographically for me since I have three, um, force of the county in my district. That would be very helpful in my campaigning, but, um, I don't, I don't have campaigning on my radar when I'm working. So, um, what, what I do like is that it is divided more evenly so that those who do represent urban areas have a constituency in the rural area. Um, right now I am the only member on the board that has more role than urban. Um, and that is a concern to me because when we do go to five, there will not be a supervisor that has more role than city constituents. And as a rural-centered county government, um, that is a concern to me. Will they understand? Will those that are running understand and, and come from a rural background and, um, understand those, those issues that are facing them? Uh, I think, um, also in talking to our county attorney's office about this, um, they were concerned that a board would make these decisions and not have a petition from the public in, um, the direction in which the public would want us to go. At this point, we're kind of driving this and we're, you know, saying, well, we'd like, you know, it to be set up this way and that way. A petition from the public would be just that. Uh, the public would then choose, um, not only to go to a five-member board, but the structure of that government. Uh, so the financial impact, that's, that's really key. I don't know if it can go on the ballot. I don't know if that's something, but, um, that's a huge consideration. Uh, in Warren County and counties throughout Iowa, um, our part-time positions are benefit-eligible. And so you can get a part-time person in here and we don't really, uh, for a part-time job, um, it's good income, but it's, it's not something you can live off of if you have a family. So something with benefits, you're adding twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars more on that salary. So look at the base salary, but then add that, um, if they do take the benefits. So that's a substantial amount of money for two more people, um, who, if they aren't gonna do their own research in these things, frankly, I'm not, I'm not in favor of having two more people that are gonna sit on this board and not go and do their homework and just depend on coming to a meeting and getting educated. Because at this board meeting, we do not have the thorough discussions about matters that are going on because we have packets and we're able to go to other, um, departments and talk to them about it as well as attend other meetings and to get educated. And this meeting is for basically the public to know what is going on, uh, on a very high level and what decisions we're making. So, um, in that regard, I guess I, I really question, um, going to five. And, and I hadn't really considered the administrative, um, position at, at Warren County. Uh, I think that's something that I would like to really look into. Um, I guess those are, those are the thoughts that I had.
Okay, Aaron, can I just say one more thing?
You may.
Thank you. Tom Phillips again, mayor of Norwalk. Uh, I, 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 I really like the idea of administrator. I would, I would warn you as far as having an administrator with three board members. Uh, that was attempted once here at Warren County. Probably a decade ago or so, there was one person that was acting as financial administrator-type person. Uh, the admit, the, the board members would come to that person and then all of a sudden there was, there was information that was being relayed and all of a sudden they broke open meetings laws. Uh, I think your administrator would be, if you had three and had administrator, it would be very difficult to avoid, uh, breaking the, the open meetings laws. So I just caution you as far as that goes.
Well, even with the five, we can get together. It's the perception from the public. It's not that we can get together and tell each other how we're voting something 'cause I could do that with each other member and that would be breaking open meetings laws. So we can get together, it's just the, the perception to the public is, oh, they're not informed. So-
Understand.
You know?
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying be careful with the administrator because you would put the administrator in a bad position-
Right.
-to break open meetings laws and you don't want to do that.
And, and I think the administration, uh, from, from what I understand, which I haven't researched this, excuse me, so maybe speaking out of turn, but I'm pretty sure that they have to be on the ballot as well. So it's someone that is voted on by the public.
To, to, well, I know for cities to transfer from a, a, a council or board-type of government to go to a, a city manager role, the city has to vote on it. I would imagine that that's the same thing for a county too, that to, to go to a manager role, they have to go to a vote.
So I wonder how that does affect the open meeting law? I wonder if that person also has to, I mean, I, I don't know. I, that doesn't, doesn't make sense if they're gonna be the administrator and can't talk to us, but at the same time-
But they can. Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that if you have five, instead of going, instead of trying to flow that communication through a single point of administrator because they're not a board member, you are flowing between board members then rather than through a central point and break that law. So because if two of you meet and two of you meet, and if you met with Aaron and then met with whoever's sitting over there and then met with that person over there just to, just to garner information, you're not making decisions. You're just sharing information at that point in time and that's all legal. You're not breaking any open meetings laws at that point in time.
True.
So, just to, just as a warning.
Good point. I can see exactly how it would happen with, uh, you know, what, you know, where, where's Aaron? You know, talking to the administrator, well, where's Aaron, where's Aaron on this point?
Right.
Where's Crystal on this point? I mean, that would be an obvious conversation to have when we're trying to figure out, is this gonna pass? How, what, you know, and that, I think, is the violation of the law.
Right.
That administrator, well, this is what Aaron thinks.
Right.
And that, that was something we have to, that would definitely create a challenge.
Yeah, correct. Thank you.
Okay, my concluding comment on it would be this. I, I never had any issue putting something to the public. If, and, and that's, that's effectively what this proposal does. If the public determines that they would like to see five members for whatever reason that they'd like to or if they feel like three is the better number, um, I have no qualms about putting that before them and letting them make that decision. Um, and so for that reason, I will move my whole, uh, item and, uh, make a motion to put forth on the next general election a question to the public of two additional board members. And we'll see if we get a second.
I, I just want to research more. I'm not against that. I just want to research more.
I'd like a little more time to hook up your files for a lack of seconds. Then my final, final concluded comment on it is if the public is desirous of going to five and the board is too slow in taking action, then by all means, put forth a petition with thirty, three hundred people's names on it and, uh, that question then will not be the board's to make, but it'll be the public's to make and then they can have the time to vote on it on the November two thousand twenty-two election. Right, with that budget update.
Is this on?
Thanks.
Um, is your red light on?
Okay. Um, so I was gonna start by going over the revenues, um, for April twenty twenty-one. Uh, at this point in the budget, we should give out eighty-three percent, um, of the way through. So just a couple of notes, um, so far. So for the treasurer's office, um, we're not quite there. We've got driver's license fees and interest income, um, are less than, than anticipated. Um, for the attorney, fine fund revenue will increase, uh, when the threshold is met. So we're hoping to see that go a little higher. Um, for the Department of Human Services, reimbursements are paid quarter, quarterly. So we should receive our final reimbursement in May. For the Department of Human Services, reimbursements are paid quarter, quarterly, so we should receive our final reimbursement in May. And for child welfare, reimbursements equivalent to the expenses for both wellness, for the conservation board and wellness, there's budgeted transfers that are happening in May. So we'll see an increase there. And then for capital projects, we've got additional bond for the nine-one-one communication project anticipated. So if we move on to expenditures, we have two to kind of note. The recorder's office is at eighty-five point four seven. This is due to some part-time wages. So something the board needs to think about is if we want to allow that to go negative or if we want to work on doing a reappropriation. And then in substance abuse, you'll see you're there about at their budget. The reason for that is we've got, we might have a duplicate payment to House of Mercy. So right now, we've got to call into them to see if, if we've got duplicate payment and what's going on there, get that fixed. Finally, there's just the fund balances. So if you have any questions on any of those, just let me know. Any questions on any of them?
I just want to thank you. I know I have publicly, I have noticed you staying late and doing all the things that you need to get done. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number thirteen is, uh, received and filed reports, Humane Society, General Assistance and Veterans Affairs.
I make a motion to receive a file of words.
Second. Any discussion? Go, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
Fourteen, we have discussed, discuss nutritional director application with possible action.
Oh, that, that would be a focus.
Sure.
We've talked about this in the report session and I guess the thing that we would need to discuss would be the director of nutrition, which we only received one application. And the start date, she, of course, has been acting as our interim director. And if we were to approve her, I would like to backdate it to at least the day that we received her application.
Okay, four.
I think that, would it be the day of the close of the posting or would it be the day we received? No.
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I would have, I would have to look into that.
Okay. So we did have this open for, I believe it was more than twenty-five hours, we only received one application. And like I said, she has been the interim director. Jodine, who was, who was the director of this, has been overburdened with the COVID administration of the vaccine and just feels that she can't devote the time that is necessary to continue to be the director of this nutrition.
I'll make a motion to approve, Martin Davis says I'm having a nutritional director. Effective at the appropriate start date.
Okay, I'll get with John about that unless we want to wait.
Can I have a second, Crystal?
Uh, yes, a second.
Any discussion? Rocco.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number fifteen tonight is Consider Justice Center Request with Possible Action to Move Forward with Change, Following Change Orders. Looks like there's, there's actually change orders of CCD. There's a CCD that has no cost associated with it. We don't need to approve that and we also don't need to approve number fifty-three. So we're just asking for the approval of change order number fifty-two, who's the change on the mounting arm of the, of the exterior door. So that's one part of this change order. The other part was adding wireless access points to different areas without the justice center that we know we're going to need those access points and the wireless access points were recommended by our IT staff and they were involved in the meetings to get those located and get the votes. So, any discussion on number fifty-two? None. Like, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number fifty-two in the amount of seven thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and any one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Rocco, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
And we'll skip, uh, change order number fifty-three. We don't, I guess, I guess we can, we can talk about that. I guess we can approve in this, we might as well approve while we're here. It's the door to the penthouse up in the, I guess, the penthouse of the Justice Center. They had to, they realized that they didn't have the hardware to make it secure. That wasn't in our original design, the amount was three thousand two hundred seventy-five. So I'd like to make a motion, or any discussion on that?
So, like, what is the penthouse?
It's the upper level.
Oh, of the jail?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. That's a good motion.
I, I would approve that.
Okay.
Sorry, second.
Else.
Is that, wait. I thought you made a motion.
I didn't. I, I started to, so I can see why you were confused.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve change order number fifty-three in the amount of three thousand two hundred seventy dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
And the final one looks like C, change order number fifty-four. Still wall for shower closure. It's been ready for a while and actually was discussed in one of our meetings about six weeks ago. It's now that the, the wall plate has arrived and we're going to approve the change order towards the shower enclosure.
I make a motion to approve the shower enclosure.
Uh, second. Tracy.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. And that carries. Moving on to number sixteen. We've got Consider Claims from, pardon, Consider Claims from Final Process Service with Possible Action. Um, I've got claims number, statement ending in three, five, and eight in the amount of eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Statement number three, five, and one in, in the amount of three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars.
Are these the last three of the second one? Of the end of?
Three, five, and one. What's the statement number?
Statement number one.
And I make a motion to approve both claims.
A second, yeah.
Start of discussion. Tracy.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Tracy.
DeCook?
Aye. Motion carries. Number seventeen, Supervisor's Report. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Okay, for the last two weeks, I met with Conservation about the Great Western Trail. Took a tour of Harvest Academy and called Senator Garrett to answer questions concerning the Harvest Academy. Met with the nine-one-one director for updates. Updated, was updated by the co-director of Conservation. Various calls with HR. Update with the auditor. Met with Nutrition interim director. Update with IT director and several other meeting, meetings with him. Professional Development Academy, Breakout Group, live event twice in the last two weeks and classes every day with the Professional Development Academy. I sat American Rescue Plan working group meetings two in the last two weeks. Interviewed over the phone strategic planners. Met with ADP, HR and Office Assistant to discuss options and training. Our bi-weekly work session. Attended a special board meeting to discuss work orders for Warren County Justice Center. And wanted to make aware to the public that we do have a road notification tool that the public can sign up. If you're interested, please contact myself. These are four emails to know when, when and where roads are closed. And it is available on our website. If you have any questions or how to get to it, please contact me. Dispatch discussions with the nine-one-one director and EMA. Also attended and head of the Warren County EMA restructuring meeting. Attended a webinar on confronting extremism. Attended a Mount Tabor ceremony, cemetery open house, where Stan Lawyer was recognized for his Eagle Scout project installing new flag poles at every cemetery within Quack Creek Township. Met with the engineer auditor concerning payroll and benefits assignment. Last night, our nine-one-one service board met for a presentation and discussion by the sheriff. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, sir, thank you. Um, I just want to, just say thank you to our treasurer's office. Tabitha with our treasurer's office was able to locate some abstracts that helped us with a TIF issue and that seems to be going in the right direction to get revenue, deserved revenue back into Warren County. So if you see Tabitha, please give her a hug or thank her or high-five or whatever's, forward appropriate, fist bump. I've had a meeting with Harvest States. Fielded some constituents' calls relative to some parking on square issues, multiple justice center meetings. In, in the process of formulating some maintenance schedules and maintenance structuring around Kirk and, uh, I've been thinking and trying to figure out if we're doing the proper things in regards to maintain, maintenance. Don't have anything for the board at this point. I did attend another recycling meeting, two IT meetings regarding the Justice Center and getting the right things there. We don't have all the things we need to have a secure wireless network in our Justice Center, but we're getting there. And IT, my hat's up to IT, they're, they've been tremendous. They know what they need, they know how to get it and they, they've been doing great. I attended an impact orientation meeting. I visited with zoning in regards to a couple of issues. And I attended the nine-one-one dispatch meeting last night. I actually, I met with a constituent on a statue issue here a couple of days ago and that's about it. Thank you. Work session and special meetings as the other ones attended. Spent some time reaching out to some members of the legislature regarding ERA budgeting and specifically crowdfunding. The court had sent an email addressed to myself and maybe the board regarding some of their share of our project. And at, at that point, they, they were positive exactly what sort of number the legislature was going to send to them. And while that might not exactly fall into our wheelhouse, I have a vested interest in making sure that that building keeps moving in the right direction. And so it was time to make sure that that building's moving in the right direction. And I am pleased to announce that I believe as of last week, funding has been secured from the portion at a higher dollar round than perhaps or at least the middle of dollar round furniture walls are still open here, but it was a good number.
Okay.
Did have a meeting with our sheriff. Spent a little bit of time in the engineer's office recently on a couple of things. Let's see, the nutrition funding. Did attend the Norwalk school board meeting last night. Did meet with our payroll person director. Did take some calls and emails regarding some constituent issues, including, while this recent rain has been very well received in my luck because the Raccoon River is so low and farmers need water and I'm trying to grow some deer food plots. It unfortunately has made a few of our roads a little wetter than they were a couple of weeks before and starting to get a couple of those, but I, I think our engineer's on it, so that was, that was good. Didn't want to give the public just a brief COVID update from a non-doctor, but I, I did address the public a couple of months back in February up here about vaccine rollout and how it would be my hope that if we return to normal and, uh, return to normal, uh, will be coming sooner rather than later. Our, our health director is informing that we are one of the counties that are returning additional vaccines away. It seems to me like everyone who's desirous of getting a vaccine certainly has the accessibility to do so. And the numbers of vaccinated folks continue to grow. Our school, the reason I went to the school board meeting last night was because I think most people are aware the Iowa Department of Health issued some new guidance for schools for the last two weeks of school. The CDC came out with some updated guidance late last week. And I was curious to see how our school district was going to deal with the same. They took sort of a measured middle ground approach there. But I did see that some of the, some of the schools in the county took a more aggressive approach. I think Indiana Land Carlisle perhaps dropped mask mandates altogether. And so everyone's doing something different and that's fine. I, I'm just happy to see some progress. I would also encourage kindness and patience because everyone seems to be in a different spot. Everyone has different life experiences. Some people floss people and others have not really had any effect of it. So for whatever it's worth, I, I always encourage kindness where possible and show some grace and compassion because everyone has different experiences. But from my take, it looks like things are moving too much, much nicer in normal summer and I'm certainly looking forward to that. So with that, that will be my supervisor's report tonight. And at this time, we will open it up for public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. Board will not be taking any action on set comments due to requirements of the open meetings laws, but may do so in the future. Public input will be allowed, will not be. Public input will be allowed, will not be allowed for today's debate. Mr. Phillips?
Skip Phillips, thirteen forty-one Ram Street, um, chairman of the Board of Directors for Greenfield Township Trustees, chairman of the Northern Warren Fire and Emergency Response Trustees. Um, I don't have all of the information on this, but I understand close to R sixty-three and G twenty-four, there's a halfway house being developed. And it sounds like that the longer range plan is for that to become as many as eighty-five people in that population. I have two concerns. One, as an architect, I'm concerned that we don't have the building codes that are necessary for a population that big in a building. Number two, our emergency response, uh, area, and that's part of the Greenfield Township, uh, Northern Warren Fire Department. Uh, that's going to put a rather large strain if there are an emergency situation there. Um, of course, we do have mutual aid agreements, but that could be a very dangerous situation to have that large of a population. What I would suggest is that you have a limit on the number of people that are, uh, allowed in that particular operation or better yet, move it to a city where it's a, a, a better fit for their, their goals. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else or online that would like to speak? Okay. Well, it appears that our next meeting Tuesday is going to fall on June first. Um, that'll be at nine thirty AM meeting. Um, I usually say something along the lines of we, we go morning and then evening. Um, a prior board, not too many years ago, made that decision so that folks would have the ability, if they weren't working, to be physically present and to be able to address the board. Sometimes that's more impactful than sending a letter or an email or, or whatever. And so tonight's our evening meeting. Our next one is going to be the morning meeting. Uh, our next official one will be June one at nine thirty. With that, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So.
One second. Tracy?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
De Cook?
We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time, Karen.